Good evening. My name is Vince Noblet, President of the Speedway Planning Commission. Today is August 14th, 2023, and it is 6:02 PM. I want to go ahead and call this meeting to order. First off, I wanted to just introduce the members of the Planning Commission. We've got David Lindsay on my right.
Good evening.
And I've got Gary Pettigo on my left.
Hi there.
And at this point in time, Grant, you want to introduce the rest of the
Yeah.
Members of the Commission?
Yep. So obviously, I'm the Town Manager, Grant Klein, hence Philip Faust is here tonight as our Clerk Treasurer. Bob Clutter is our Town Attorney. Also in the audience, we have two gentlemen from Klein Peter Consulting, Mike Klein Peter and Brandon Watts. They have helped us through this process, obtained the OKRA financing, make sure we have all the reports done. They are here tonight to read a prepared statement about what the requirements of the public hearing are and the comprehensive plan. After that, we have Philip Roth from American Structure Point. He was the Project Manager on this project. He'll have a presentation of 10 to 15 minutes, talking about the highlights of the plan. And then we will open a public hearing, listen to comments and questions, close that public hearing, and then the Plan Commission, I almost called you the Council.
Okay.
The Plan Commission will consider adopting a resolution, sending a favorable recommendation to the Town Council for adoption of the comp plan, which will be at the August 28th Town Council meeting, if everything goes well this evening. So.
At this opportunity, everybody please rise in front of the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is an overview of the Office of Community and Rural Affairs Comprehensive Plan, the requirements from Klein Peter Consulting. Mike, it's all yours.
Good evening, Plan Commission. Mike Klein Peter, Klein Peter Consulting Group. I've got Brandon Watts with Klein Peter Consulting Group with me today. Notice for the public hearing we're going to do in a little bit was advertised in the Indianapolis Star on August 7th. The town held their first public hearing regarding this grant opportunity back on September 1st of 2021. We then applied for and received a grant from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs in the amount of $60,000. The town is contributing $6,700 from the general fund as part of this project. The town went through an RFQ, Request for Qualification Process, and selected American Structure Point, who has been working on this comp plan. Today is going to be the second required public hearing to fulfill the requirements of OKRA. We want to make sure that citizens are fully informed and have an opportunity to voice any concern or comments regarding the plan. With that, I'll turn it over to Philip Roth to go through his presentation.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening. Again, my name's Philip Roth. I'm with American Structure Point. I am a consultant who has been working on the comprehensive plan. As Mike said, tonight is a public hearing. First, it's a requirement of OKRA, but also it's a requirement of state statute for the adoption of the plan. Things are a little unusual because this is kind of a new process for the town, being the first comprehensive plan adopted under a new statute. But we're going to follow all the requirements of state code to make sure that everything is done properly in an order. OKRA, as Mike mentioned, this is an OKRA-funded project. We did have a review of the plan by OKRA. They have signed off on it. They have given their thumbs up for you to move ahead with adoption, with adopting it. So my purpose tonight is to, I've refreshed your memory on the plan a couple of weeks ago, but also I would just want to give kind of an overview for the public, to give a sense of the context of the plan, and kind of relay what the process was and where we've been with it. Now, for the public's purpose, or for the public's benefit, I want to state that a comprehensive plan is a general statement of policy that has specific requirements and state code. It is differentiated from a zoning ordinance or subdivision ordinance, say, but rather is instead supposed to be a general statement of how the community wants to grow and develop. It is intentionally general so that it can apply to a wide variety of contexts, whether they're ordinance development, whether they're projects that come out of the plan, whether there are other types of initiatives that the community wants to pursue. So tonight, we're just going to talk a little bit about the process and then the way in which we utilized public involvement and stakeholder engagement to come up with a statement of goals and objectives for the town, and then identify what the actual plan elements and strategies are. As Mike mentioned, we began the process, well, I think from Mike's perspective, the story began in 2021. Our story began in 2022, early last year, when we started off with a kickoff in March of last year, having, pulling together a review team consisting of representatives from across the community, from downtown, economic development, residential, elected office, appointed office interests. And this review team advised us throughout the entire process on all of the elements that we were developing. We used last summer as a forum for getting public input on the plan. We had a survey. We went out and had several events in the community, including a meeting at concerts at the park, concerts downtown, trying to go out and be where people were. From there, we started to develop what we thought were the high-level goals and objectives of the plan, and from there started to move into implementation strategies. It was at the end of this Phase 3 that we started, that we put the plan up to OKRA for their review and approval. As I mentioned, we did have quite a bit of public engagement. I myself was very pleased by the degree of community participation. The first survey that we did last summer had the highest participation, both in total number of participants and percentage of a community's population that we've ever had, close to 500 responses. I was extremely pleased with that. We don't normally see that kind of response. I think it's a testament to the degree to which your community is vested in its long-term vision. And I also think that it has to do with the degree to which you and your partners in your appointed offices got the word out about the survey. We also had a number of stakeholder meetings, talking with various groups in the community about the future of the community from their perspective, whether it was a downtown interest, whether it was an industrial park employer, and trying to come up with some kind of themes or issues that we saw. What we heard in the aggregate was that the town, despite the proximity and benefits from being so close to Indianapolis, wanted to maintain a very small-town feel, a very close-knit community kind of feel. There was some concern about affordable housing and making sure that we were ensuring a sufficient quantity of quality affordable housing. There was kind of a, some importance placed upon expanding and retaining existing businesses, particularly since the community does not have any place to grow and expand. And then we heard a lot about parks and recreation, about making sure that the community was capitalizing on the multimodal pathways that are being developed in and around the community, and then working in the downtown, making sure that the historic nature of some of these smaller districts was being preserved and appropriately taken care of. From there, we came up with a vision statement. I'm not going to read it out loud, but the idea is that we were trying to reflect this recognition of the town's key features, as well as maintaining a balance of having a smaller community, a small-town feel, a smaller, close-knit community. Now, when you look at the write-up for the plan, you will notice that the content is organized around 13 themes. I've said to you before that I'm not the biggest fan of having to shoehorn the content into these 13 categories, but this is a requirement from the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. And when they review the plan, we have to keep it in that format so that they can efficiently take a look at it and make sure it's meeting their requirements. But if members of the public are wondering, for example, why we're looking at agriculture, that's the reason. Some of these categories are less applicable than others, but we tried to give each one the attention that it was due and that we were expected to give by OKRA. Having come up with a vision, we came up with a number of goals. The primary focus of all of this was to make sure that we were continuing an economically vibrant community where the well-being of the residents was continually improving. We address housing and environmental sustainability, community development, preparedness, governance, transportation. All of this is aimed at creating a thriving and inclusive community. And these goals meet, the rubber meets the road in the actual land use plan. Again, if you were expecting to see a zoning map, you would be somewhat taken aback by this, but we're trying to focus development on the key corridors, redevelopment of the key corridors along Crawfordsville Road and 16th Street, as well as trying to support the downtown area and the areas on Lynnhurst, south of Crawfordsville Road. So we're trying to keep a focus on the key corridors of the community and trying as well to establish, increasingly establish kind of a center of gravity within the community in the area where we are now. And this is, in fact, pretty close to being the geographical center of the community, as you know. We also highlighted some, what we call, critical path strategies. This is, goes over and above what the requirements of the state statute are for a comprehensive plan, but it's our way of trying to set you up for success by making sure that you have some key actions that are identified once the plan is adopted, so that you can move forward with implementation. They, some of them are aimed at improving information sources for economic development. Some of them are trying to fold in capital improvements into a capital improvement plan and program so that you have a rational basis for capital budgeting over the next few years, and then supporting a lot of economic development efforts and educational efforts within the Here's some more of them. Again, I'm not going to read these out loud, but these are all on the, I did bring the one-page summary, and I noticed you had some leftover as well, so they should be well available for public review. As Grant mentioned, we're having the public hearing tonight, and in your role as the Plan Commission, in two weeks, you will turn around and put on your Town Council hat for the adoption proceedings, provided that everything has been conducted to your satisfaction. We do recommend that you update the plan continuously over time. We're starting now to get more detailed information from the 2020 census. It's been very slow in coming out. I don't think there are any surprises there from what we were looking at, but it'd be good to just kind of check those and make sure that the socio-demographic information is still relevant. And of course, you want to keep apprised of any developments in the surrounding community. For example, we've become aware that the City of Indianapolis has received a grant for studying 16th Street from I-70 all the way on the east side up to and perhaps past the corporate limits for the town. It'd probably be good to be a participant in that planning process and whatever emerges from that. So all these things should, there's always going to be this kind of reconciling of surrounding events with what goes on in the plan. The plan's going to be your guide as to what you want to do, but then things are going to change, and that's going to affect how you're going to be interpreting the plan. Now, I think that's the longest I've spoken in several meetings. I was joking with Mike that the past couple of times have always been some things that precluded a longer presentation, and I can be quite long-winded, so. But if you have any questions before we get into the public meeting, I'd be happy to hear them now. Otherwise, we can go ahead and enter into the public hearing portion of the meeting.
Ellis, are there any questions that you'd like to go ahead and ask Philip at this time?
Can you mention, I know we talked about the group that was together. Can you name some of the businesses and the groups from within the town that were part of this whole group that met?
We had.
I know it's going to be hard to remember all of them, but.
We had members from your redevelopment commission. We had members from Allison Transmission. We had members from your Chamber of Commerce and from your economic development staff. Your Parks and Rec Director, who is here this evening, was a member as well.
Speedway Schools.
Speedway Schools, yes.
John Disney was on.
Schools.
You were on it.
And Gary Riggs.
That was not the reason for my question.
We also had a couple of real estate agents. Couple of them wore several hats, but I think a good cross-section of the community.
Which is why I ask. I mean, I sat, and there was some very good conversation that was brought up to get all of this put together. I mean, it was not, this has been a very long process, and a lot of different thoughts and comments have been brought up throughout the past year and more on this, and I want to be sure that that's pointed out tonight.
Thank you. I agree with your assessment. There was some good diverse perspectives on the team, and I think we did have some good dialogue that ensued, so.
And I know you touched on it too, but it was impressive to me, the survey that was sent out and the response that you got from that, responses that served on the committee were given those, and a lot of great comments from the, from responses from that as well.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I was amazed. Again, go ahead, David.
No, go ahead.
Got a question in relationship to zoning. You know, Speedway, you know, at our first attempt of zoning, when we changed Main Street and SC1, SC2 in relationship to that, and that helped the town achieve its goals of that. What do you see of zoning playing a part in the comprehensive plan? And what do you see as a pathway to accomplishing some of these goals?
Well, many communities nowadays are moving away, at least from, in their older areas that are established and vibrant. They're moving away from regulating uses, per se, and regulating more the form and bulk and appearance of the buildings themselves. Not in a historic, not a historic ordinance, I want to differentiate that, but instead trying to write their zoning regulations in a way that is clear and provides well-defined criteria on what the, on what the building should look like, on the heights of the different stories, for example, making sure that the character is consistent between different buildings. The idea behind this is that rather than dictating side yards and front setbacks and uses, the idea is that if we give flexibility to the landowners and give them some freedom of expression for the different types of buildings, but still have some standards to follow, that that would be considerably more, I'm looking for the right word, I'm a little tired this evening, I apologize, that would give a lot more incentive to landowners to develop something that both meets their ends, but also happens to meet the community's objectives as well.
Just an additional comment in regards to the zoning. As you know, in July of 2021, the town became in charge of our own zoning.
Right.
We've had a BZA for a while, but we finally, we had to adopt the comprehensive plan of Indianapolis and its commensurate zoning that necessarily didn't fit our community vision and our community goals, but we had to do that because state statute said, now you're in charge of this. So one of the things we want to do as an outgrowth of this comprehensive plan, and I believe is probably one of the most important things we can do in the near term, is take a look at our zoning code. We probably don't need to look at our housing subdivision control ordinance, because we don't have a lot of new growth, but we can look at our zoning code, particularly for business and commercial, and identify what we want things to look like and feel like, and then change those codes to reflect that. That would be a process that would take a year or so, but also would not see necessarily benefits for a while, because you're going to grandfather current zoning and current standards, but as things develop and develop new or redevelop, you would then use these new codes that we would develop to go more towards the form, function, and look of what we want, rather than just standard zoning. And there's nothing wrong with Indianapolis' zoning code, but it's not the town of Speedway.
Well, I noticed, you know, that we're calling out for certain areas in town to, you know, for new single-family homes, you know, what, you know, as far as controlling the look of those homes, square footage, and the type of building material that they're made of and stuff like that, you know, those I could see requiring, you know.
Some touching up to our subdivision control ordinance, but not necessarily a full-blown, because, yeah, we do have two or three areas identified in this plan where we could do some single-family housing, some additional mixed-use housing or patio homes, different things for seniors. And those are things that we really need to create zoning that, once again, matches what we want and allows those developments to happen.
And while I differentiated between the zoning code and the comprehensive plan, I do want to point out that the comprehensive plan needs to inform what's in your zoning ordinance and your subdivision ordinance. That's why you had to adopt the city's plan as your own before you could make changes, before you could adopt the zoning code as your own. Now that you've made a new comprehensive plan, you have set the stage where you can start to do your own regulations the way that you would like to see them in the community.
State statute requires you adopt a comprehensive plan before you can adopt a zoning ordinance.
Right. Sounds good. Any other questions for Philip? Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Go ahead, and then we advertised the public hearing for the comprehensive plan. Go ahead and open up that plan. It's 6:25, and just wanted anybody that would like to speak to the Planning Commission, please come forward, state your name and address, and address the Planning Commission.
Yeah. Good evening. Nick Sturgeon, 5045 West 14th Street here in Speedway. I do want to commend the Council as a whole, but specifically this body for, and these guys for coming up with the plan. 135-ish pages is quite a lot to get through, but it is, for as general as the plan is, it is still pretty comprehensive. I think it's on the right track personally. The one thing that I was going to stress before, was stressed at the end of the presentation, is just that continual improvement, to make sure that it is continually looked at, revised based on the change of economics, you know, whatever it may be. But just, I guess, close up real quick here is that I am supportive of this plan. Just want to make sure that we implement those things smartly and with as much efficiency as we can. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Anybody else would like to speak tonight? Going once? Yeah. While saying that nobody else has any additional input, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing at 6:27.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. We approve Resolution 2023-01, a resolution certifying the comprehensive plan this evening.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Is there any discussion?
So the only thing I want to make sure is very clear. This is, this is the Plan Commission that's certifying that this plan's good, that it meets the requirements. You're now forwarding it on. I know it seems silly to yourself, the Town Council. We will have that resolution before you at the August 28th meeting. In the meantime, the plan will continue to be on the website. We will, over the next two weeks, communications will put out Facebook posts and social media, reminding people you can review it, you can provide comments. And then on, at the August 28th meeting, we'll have this on your agenda. Once, if you approve that, we will then get some hard copies made. That's part of the contract with American Structure Point. I can't remember how many, but we'll get some hard copies made. We'll distribute that to our staff, department heads. That'll be used in our, by our Plan Commission, by our Board of Zoning Appeals, as they review requests. Staff will use that as we put things like capital improvement plans together, budgets down the road. In fact, some of these items are already included in there for next year, and we will review it annually. We may not make a big deal of it and have like a four-hour meeting, but we'll identify some things, oh, we accomplished this, and we're working on this. And that way, we can kind of keep ourselves accountable. Town Council can keep staff accountable, and we'll progress in that manner. So that's all I have to add. Thank you.
I just like that. I don't think I've ever sat in a four-hour meeting for the town, so.
Okay. Maybe a two-hour meeting.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, any other comment?
I just think it's, I mean, as we've said, I mean, it's a lot of hard work. Whoever is here, whoever's in charge for the next several years for the town, I hope they read this, study it, make use of it. There's a lot of great information in here that needs to be, that needs, needs to be followed. to be, that needs, needs to be followed through, through on.
You're here.
Absolutely. You know, and I thought it was very interesting, too, the commentary you made in relationship to the public input and how it's one of the highest public inputting. And that goes back to redevelopment days in which we had, you know, large crowds at the school and, and the input that we received often. I think it just shows the character of the town of Speedway. We got a lot of people that wants Speedway to be the best that we can be. And it just shows when you have that kind of input and people care, you know, from that. So no other comments. I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 3-0.
I, I do have one final reminder about the sign-in sheet. I don't know if there was another sign-in sheet back there. Is this the only one? If you have not signed up, please, we won't contact you. It's just important that we have it on the record to show who, who showed up. So, thank you.
Not going to use their information?
No, we will not. We didn't ask for phone number or addresses or anything. So we just want to make sure we know who, that people showed up.
Okay. I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 6:31.